And our next item is the discussion on the JLCDB Compassionate Administration of Therapeutic Cannabinoid Products on District Property. And Matt is here too, so we'll be able to get some of that other data. So that's Matt, Dr. Fletcher, and Zach Craddock, Matt Meister.
Hello, good evening. Do you guys want to start with that first? Okay. So since we last talked, we created a specific poll online for staff. And I have that data for you. And also a breakdown of some of the data from our poll into some different different segments of the population. So one includes non, one with non Colorado residents. We were over 800 respondents as of this morning. There were only 38 of them had selected the non Colorado resident. Mark, so it was a very low percentage of the respondents of the poll. As Marie had mentioned last time, it is possible that some folks that are living in our community did check that due to their official residency with the military. But in terms of poll results, you can see that about 81% are in support of the poll or of the proposed policy, excuse me. The 14.4% that you see in the second selection there are people that have left the comment. So they said yes, but they wanted us to know something. And the bulk of the themes that have developed around the discussions, whether it's on d49.org or on social media, were included in your packet. And you saw those, those revolved around the concern of federal funding. Also, the number of students coming into the district and how the products would be administered. From a lot of the comments, it is apparent to me and my staff in analysis that a lot of the folks making some of those comments hadn't led the policy or hadn't made it all the way to the end of the policy, in particular with regards to federal funding. So I know some of you were interested in that. We also made a specific poll for employees. And this one you see, let's see, 73% if I'm doing my math right, yeah, are also in support, not as more employees felt compelled to add something. So a lot of the yes buts were actually just statements of support. And having worked with some of the children that would be impacted by the policy, again, the major themes there, those were also included in your packet, were around the funding and how the products would actually be administered on the school grounds. And then parents overwhelming support, you can see about 87, 88% support. So that's, those are the, the, I guess, breakdowns that I had made for you. We can go back to some of those major themes if you like, but that was all in your packet. So. And I will, before your May 12 meeting, enter into the packet every single comment that we do have from the polls. For the record, exactly. So we will include those. That'll be some work to pull them off some of the social media things, but I think it's worth it to include the community's voice. So, yes, any questions about that?
I appreciate the breakdown.
I will say that I think I made a mistake in administering the poll specifically to employees. We had done a lot of work, obviously, with getting that out to media to let our greater community know through that way. But we never sent a specific invitation to our employees to take part in the poll that was on Facebook. And so we went a different route and made one on the website for them, knowing that they all had easy access to that. But I think, you know, having the poll live in two places is probably not as efficient as it could be. So that was a mistake I made, so apologize for that. Okay. So, good evening. My name is Zach Craddock. I'm with Individualized Education. And this received a packet in your board update containing several different pieces that Mr. Hiltz requested that we present to you. The first, and I don't know if you want me to go through this, would you like me or would you like just for me to answer possible questions you may have?
Highlights?
Okay. So the first is legal and political. Obviously, I know one of the questions we had at our last board meeting was district insurance and their stance. And their stance has been to remain neutral, not comments, as of the last update we had from them. Current bill exists in two draft forms. We should get another draft form of that tomorrow. And the most, the most obviously legal impact is that of federal funds. The current bill does have three caveats that says districts may not draft the policy. If they lose federal funds, they can reasonably demonstrate they lost federal funds or they post on their website in a very conspicuous place their intent not to comply. So that is an update that came out Thursday from the new draft. Our current draft policy does contain a cease and desist, so we're in full compliance with that. The financial pieces. Current draft bill explicitly states that we cannot deny enrollment for any student seeking enrollment out of, if they're an out of district student seeking enrollment into the district solely based on the use of any of these products. However, current state regulations do allow us to deny choice on three specific areas. Number one, the program does not exist at the school they're requesting enrollment into. Number two, we do not have the space. Or three, it would require additional staffing. And so District 40, we can deny under any of, any of those. And currently, right now, we are at a stretch in two of those three areas. The first is space. Obviously, our schools, especially our elementary schools, are crowded. And we've gone for a bond and we have a mill at the next election. So that is obvious factor, and that'll be assessed at a case or a school by school basis. The second is staffing. Currently, right now, with just our growth in special education and growth in students across the district, we review each incoming student, each IEP individually, and we assess the need for additional personnel on a case by case basis. So depending on the school enrollment and the program the student would need in their last IEP, personnel and staffing could be an issue to deny out of district enrollment. In 2014, 15, we saw an increase of eight to 10 students that would, that would need this accommodation. This did reduce during the school year due to the students' unique needs. We flexed from a traditional school environment to homebound placement due to just medical issues and those that we could accommodate the family. In 2015 and 16, we've seen an increase of less than five students that we can document that have moved into the district based on this. And 13 and 14, 15, that, that number was higher. We have seen that drop this fiscal year. District funding, we currently receive $9,300 for each special education student. We have just over 1,800 students in our December count. This, this, this does include October, which is regular funding. And then additional special education funding is documented through the December count. We receive around $2 million in IDA funding, which is federal funding. And we receive approximately $600,000 in Medicaid funding that we get through the billing of specific services by licensed providers for students that are Medicaid eligible. Of that 600,000, approximately 550,000 is distributed out, not just for special education students, but assessments, protocol, support, services. A wide variety of students receive support under Medicaid funding. This includes FT. We have nurses that are currently being paid salary and benefits under our Medicaid reimbursement, protocols, assessment, sensory intervention equipment, and specialized items. We also have a large quantity of wellness support that goes to all of our campus through our wellness program. On the cost to educate, so many of our severe students require one-on-one paraprofessionals due to health and safety concerns. Currently, with our salary scale and benefits, the average cost of a paraprofessional run with benefits runs around $24,000 a year. Many of our students need additional related services in the form of occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech language, nursing, adapted PE. And those, those, those do cost because we have caseloads that we have to comply with, make sure we can serve all of our students in schools. And that would be on an individual basis, based on the need of the student and the proportionate cost of that person's salary and benefits. We also require specialized equipment. We have to factor in special education transportation in the form of busing, drivers, and monitors to transport students effectively. So when we factor all that in, we have to take all those into consideration as the cost to educate us, any student, any student. Educational, our goal is to provide a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment possible. That's an IDA standard. I can say that, you know, approximately it takes 15 minutes to check out a child, transport them off campus, administer, and come back. You multiply that over the 160 days, which is the minimum requirement in the state of Colorado, and these students are losing over 2,000 minutes per school year, instructional minutes. So that is just, that is, we can quantify that. We can tell what that is. What is harder, though, and perhaps even more important, is, is the seizure activity, the severity and frequency. When that happens, that, that limits the student's ability to engage in the, in the instructional environment and learn. And that, I don't know if we can put a time on, but it is significant. And the rest of this is Mr. Meister's information. We've also included, we've included our draft policy here, and you'll see some highlights in yellow. What we wanted to do is include, I recommended, including, and actually, I see an error on here. It should say pre-K through 12, not kinder, pre-K. Including students 18 to 21 that currently are provided services in our transition program through IDA. We wanted to make sure we added that in there. Also recommend from the valid registration that it come from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment that it come from that. And also that will include hemp-based products as well. We've also added down to the parent garden, but also an emergency contact over age 18. And we would like to document that through identification card that has date of birth. It would also be possibly on the registration card issued to the state of Colorado. We have struck out where it says store overnight. We think that if we add in the license of the primary caregiver and/or the emergency contact, that should take care of that piece there with storing it during the day. And then we have a draft regulation. How would we do this, the practical implementation? How would this happen? We have a draft exhibit. How would we document this? We're recommending this through a healthcare plan, which we already have in the district. And we figured with that, with that regulation in our healthcare plan, we would have a process that we can manage this, can be managed effectively, timely, efficiently, with good response back to the family. And the last is the last update from the draft, or the draft bill that's currently going through the house.
So you highlighted what was added, but there were some things, a few that were taken out, which is?
Got it, yes.
The patches. Where are we at on the patches?
Top part right here, first page. Medical professional means an individual license. So we were not, I would not recommend at this time, a privately provided nurse. That means that we would have to store it. So if we strike that, that medical professional, I believe, is intended to be the privately funded nurse. Also, oh, I'm sorry, one big piece I did. I would recommend that patches be approved. The patches be approved. So that is struck out patches or other forms of administration that continue to deliver cannibidoid products to a student while at school or not permitted. I'd recommend we do allow that form of administration. We crossed out a medical professional down at the bottom and up top as well in section one on this page. And overnight, of course. That would eliminate storing that at all if that person cannot administer.
Zach, at the DAC meeting last night, one of the administrators said they'd been asked in interviews with nurses that their, the nurses had concerns about their licensing. Is that a real issue or is it just?
It is if they administer, yes, sir.
Okay.
And so the reason I'd recommend we take out the medic, and also it's in the new law, is also that any nurse that's a registered nurse has ethical obligations they have to, and they cannot administer this. Our nurses know that, and under our policy, they would not administer it. And so I've met with them twice, and I met with our lead nurse yesterday. And the way our policy is currently written, they are in support because they do not have to administer nor store. With taking out the caregiver, the privately funded caregiver, nor would they have the responsibility to ethically report that a colleague did. Yes, sir.
I find great irony in some of this stuff because as board, board members, we all took an oath to uphold the laws of the United States of America too, in addition to the state laws. So we even end up in this phenomenal contradiction of oath. So it's fun. So I had overheard at one point that the nurses, if there was any kind of legal action, the nurses could be called or subpoenaed to testify, would that be an issue?
Well, if our nurses were administered, they'd be contradicting their license. They could not do that legally. You know, my, my worry that I would not want to happen, I do not think it would happen, but I think the changes that we're recommending totally eliminate the possibility of them being put in an ethical dilemma where a colleague who is a registered nurse is administering something and our nurses know they should not be. I would not want to put them in that situation where they're wanting to do, they're wanting to do what's the best for the child, knowing that their profession is not approving of this. This takes them out of that equation. They, they, if ultimately, yes, I guess if this they go, they could be subpoenaed if someone accused someone of administering this and it did go to court.
And you also said that you have met with the, the nursing staff throughout the district? And what was the results of that?
I met with them at the original, when this first draft came out, received four emails saying, thank you, this is the right thing to do. They were very, very apprehensive at first because they thought they would have to administer it. So very similar to what Mr. Meister said, a lot of our yes but comments and teachers or staff did not read through and parents did not read through the full policy. My nurses did not until we sat down at Skyview and went through the whole thing. When they saw they would not administer, the store caused a little anxiety. This will eliminate all of that anxiety. And my lead nurse, Jen Gabrielson, met with her yesterday, and she provided me some recommended insight on the dash R in the exhibit to make this even stronger.
And so now that we're removing the storage facility, the cost to implement is basically negligible. Is that correct? Just no additional training, no additional equipment, no additional anything?
No, sir. Several of my nurses reported, and especially just at the large schools, not all, but just at the large schools, that if we did this, they may need some additional lockable cabinets installed. That was the only cost. With the way this policy is written, I don't foresee any additional cost other than, than just time, Jen and I, meaning reviewing, and then, you know, supporting principals and zone leaders and how to effectively manage the regulation that's proposed.
And what, I obviously got a lot of questions, so.
That's why we're here.
And what, what are the various schools and administrations? What are their concerns with this policy?
I have not talked with zone leaders nor principals specifically on this. Those will be captured in the survey from the staff. I do know, I do not know if we've disaggregated it out to administrative level.
Do our security guys have any concerns? He's got a checklist, guys. While he's thinking, I have a question this, we may actually drag counsel on this question. I have heard that the bill may not make it through this year. I don't know if that's true or not. Is there any position if it does not make it through on whether or not we should adopt this policy? I mean, aren't we kind of depending on this bill for coverage? Any concerns there?
I would have to defer that to you.
He shook his head no, so I can read that.
Brad Miller, Port Counsel. No, we're not dependent on the bill. That would be a helpful thing in some respects. But we still rely on all of the safeguards that we've put into this. And further, there are other districts currently considering something along this line, following your lead. So we're not moving unilaterally at this point anymore.
Well, and this is, the current bill is Jack's Bill Part Two. The original one, what we're proposing was okay under the wet pass last year. This year, the initial intent was to try and require, the new language has shifted that. So I'm not really sure what the point is of the new one. Actually, I've not seen, I don't see how it helps us very much. And like, okay, so I did a whole bunch of work on something that now pretty much says mostly what they said last time. So we're kind of in a, an okay position, whether or not it goes through, I think.
So my understanding is that there is a current law regulation that states you can create a policy. The one that is taking place right now that is being debated by the state is you will have a policy. I think that's the difference.
Not anymore. They changed it. It's been amended to say May again.
Okay.
One question.
So what we have here, this is the updated, it says, is it easier for you to read? It's a little blurry for me. Okay, good, good. This basically says, we may, districts or charter school, we may do this. Now, some of the language that explicitly changed was down at the bottom where Article Four, the paragraph D, which says we may do this, does not apply to a school district or charter school. If the school district or charter school loses federal funding, can reasonably demonstrate they lost federal funding or, or is it they post in a conspicuous place, a statement regarding their decision not to comply with that? So that is the opt-out.
Because this is currently before the state right now. Will our policy match up with that? Well, we have to come back and change it. I mean, if we're going to do this, I would like it to be a one-time thing and not have to keep changing.
We do, we do expect another version out tomorrow. We'll have to check that out. I do think there will be an addition to the language on another form of administration around vaporization.
And I'm going to go back to my list, so. My background being military, we rely very heavily on what we call subject matter experts, SMEs. And what I, you know, I heard from the nurses today, just a little while ago, but I haven't heard from the medical field, the medical community. So Mr. Lavier Wright had stated last time that there were hospitals that are allowing this. I'm not hearing from doctors that say this is a good thing or this is a bad thing. So, you know, I know there are parents that are affected, whose children are affected by this. It would help maybe to hear from some of these physicians. That would be one, but I would definitely like to hear from the medical field because I know this has been implemented elsewhere throughout the country, small places. It'd be nice to know what the support is from the medical profession. Additionally, it is a good idea for us to know where this has been implemented and whether it has been a success or not. You know, if it has been implemented last year in New Jersey, you know, what's the situation there? Is there abuse of, of this? Is there success with this? And also really relying on you guys to identify the unintended consequences, not just waiting for the public to say, well, this is what I'm concerned about. But by getting the lessons learned from communities that have implemented this, we might be able to find that, well, they didn't think of this. And that will help us learn and address that before it becomes an issue here. So I'd like that to be addressed. And that actually is my list. Thank you.
Can we have some of that information?
Sure. I just wrote that to make it to understand. So what we'll do is check with the medical, get some statements from that. I will say in our revised exhibit in our dash R, we're specifically looking for the physician recommendation as well. We're looking for that. And community input, that'll take some research. I don't know how long it's been out there, but I'll make some, some calls to some districts that have this and ask for, hey, what were the benefits? And then what were the unintended consequences that came out of this? And we'll see what information we can pull together and provide to you by next week.
Yeah. I have a couple of resources that'll help with the medical too. Epilepsy Foundation has physician statements by physicians who are well recognized. I think I gave them to Mr. Hiltz. There was a couple of statements, and there's also a journal part. There's a, there's actually a clinical trial now that just was, that's getting, it's in pre-publication. So it's online, but not yet in the journal. The journal comes out in June, and I think I had the citation to that because I did some searching myself. So that might give you some of the information you need.
And just to remember, this, you know, this is an issue that is, it's before the whole school district, not just five people with microphones here. So, and that's for everybody. Anything that comes across the board or comes to the board is really coming to the public. We're just the representatives here. So that's why I ask for all additional information. So it is, it is included in the record. If anybody has any questions, then we can say, did you read the packet? Did you read the survey? And then answer the questions.
Okay. And Emily, did you have anything to add or any commentary? Because I know they've discussed this somewhat at the SBR. Okay.
If I could, if I could add one thing.
Sure.
Because there was a question earlier, meetings about what our insurance feels about it. So we submitted the policy to the insurance. We've had conversations with them. And, and we have a good response in that they are making no comment on it. You know, from an insurance perspective, when they make no comment on it, that's really our best, our best answer. If they made some specific notation of that in our policy, even, even without charging it, it still would kind of open the door up to potential in the future. And of course, if they wanted to exclude it from the policy, that would be an issue for us. But so they have no, they have no problems with us, with the policy.
Well, and, and one thing that I'm not sure, unless you're kind of familiar with the inner workings of the way Medicaid handles what they do with the district, is there was a slide way back a bit that listed some of the various extra therapies and things that severe need students need. And although the way Medicaid reimburses us is if you have a child who has a Medicaid number who gets any of those services, we can show Medicaid, we did those services, and they give us a set amount of money for each of those services. But we're not allowed to use that Medicaid money to pay the people who provide those services. We have to then use that money to pay for other things in the district that serve the full student body. So when they talked about the wellness programs, the school nurses, all of those programs are programs that are funded by Medicaid money that comes in because of services we provide to students who have significant support needs at some level. And not everyone is in a severe need category who gets those things either. We have plenty of kids who receive speech or OT, who aren't in a severe needs classroom, who may have a Medicaid number and who we therefore get funds for. But many, many kids who are moderate to severe need also have Medicaid numbers because of the way that those benefits are to help children with severe needs. So there's a roundabout way in which that $550,000 to $600,000 comes to us, and we can't use it to directly offset the expense of serving those students, even though the Medicaid funds are generated by the services we provide for those students. That's, yeah, well, that's the way the legislature decided to say they would tell us how to spend the money. So it's one of those weird mandates that makes no sense from a budgetary standpoint. But when you're thinking about total cost per student, remember that $600,000 that we're using to pay for nurses for everyone, wellness funds for everyone in the district, it's paying for school gardens and for all kinds of programs at different schools, came into this district because of services we're providing severe and moderate need students. And it's just an accounting mess because of the way the legislature requires us to account for it and spend it. That's my understanding, at least. It's a convoluted mess.
I'm sure there'll be a spreadsheet about it later.
Good spreadsheet. And I'm just reporting on the end. Yesterday, I presented this subtopic to the DAC. The DAC received it very well. They had some similar questions. We were able to answer those questions. Kevin was there with me. We went through it. There was no outrage or let's stop this. It was more very positive, understanding that the, the group that needs this care should get this care.
I would say that that's notification for the DAC if they disagree with you to be here next time. I came up with two more questions. Thank you for bringing them up for me. So it would be, it would be important to know, how do we know the product that is used is, you know, officially approved by the medical field or, you know, the FDA or whatever? So I don't know if they are, but, you know, I would think it would be more than a homebrew ad hoc kind of thing.
Okay. So and Dr. Fletcher is passing out just some information I just received today. So you will see on the last two pages, well, you have a revised dash R, and you have an updated healthcare plan. And what we're actually looking on page two is the treating physicians listed on the physician certification form. So, and you have a copy of what the, the card would look like in the state of Colorado, where it has to be issued and has to provide the caregiver. And all this would be captured in our healthcare plan. And so the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, they have to have the physician certification. So by including this in our dash R in our exhibit, this is what Mrs. Gabrielson and myself would be reviewing on a case by case individual basis, provide recommendations to the zone leaders and principals. Pro RAG, once we receive this request in writing and all the supporting documents from the family, we have 10 business days to respond in writing. we have 10 business days to respond in writing. So it would have to be supported by the medical field.
Okay, and 6A, those are the only conditions that apply?
Where are you on that, sir?
I'm sorry, on the physician certification. So basically says the above-named patient has this, and then there's boxes to check cancer, glaucoma, severe nausea, severe pain, seizures. So these are the only things that are approved?
To get this medical marijuana registry, yes, sir.
That's approved by the state of Colorado. That doesn't necessarily mean that as it goes through a case-by-case basis discrimination, that it's going to necessarily automatically get approved for administration within the school by our staff. That's a separate decision, but this is, this is just the requirement by the state of Colorado for the red card.
For this sample, yes, sir. They would have to have those to get that and then, but we would handle everything on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, great. And then, next, we were just talking about Medicaid. Does Medicaid or any government funding agency approve the use of any of these products in special cases or whatever?
To my knowledge, no, no, no federal agency.
I heard there were trials going on, so I wasn't sure where it's.
I know, as of now, no federal agency.
Right, no, it's a clinical trial, and clinical trials are funded in a different way. I think the company producing it in Europe funded the doctor here, but he did get compassionate exemption to be able to.